With no further ado, we will open this meeting at six thirty P M. This is Monday, September twenty sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and this is the monthly meeting of the City of Sandy. Uh, this meeting is being held in hybrid format, so uh it's via Zoom as well as in person here. We'll begin with roll call.
Uh, just to note, Emily, Commissioner Lee is excused due to a sickness. Um, or an illness, Commissioner Wegener.
Here.
Commissioner Pullen.
Yeah.
Commissioner McLean Lenzel.
Yeah.
Commissioner Maarten.
Here.
Commissioner Hook.
Here.
Chairman Crosby.
Here.
And to note, uh, Counselor Liaison Sheldon is here as well for the minutes.
He's he's counselor here on Zoom, did you say?
He is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
All right, we had minutes in our packet for the twenty-fifth of July, two thousand twenty-two. Anything to add, change, edit? That's for me. Okay, nothing heard then, we the minutes will stand approved as presented. And we will give opportunity at this point for any requests from the floor or from the general Zoom meeting. For anybody that's attending that would like to speak to the Planning Commission tonight on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If you are online with Zoom, click the raise hand button, wait to be recognized if you're here on telephone. Dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Kelly will tell us if there's any responders.
Um, no, besides everybody in the room, Commissioner Hook, Council Liaison Sheldon and staff member Mahard, there's nobody else on.
We'll move to the Director's Report that was in our packet. Any questions for Kelly? Or clarifications or just general questions?
And I did have a few other things to update you on, just so you know.
Okay.
Um, so the October meeting is tentative at this point. We have, I believe. The Johnson R V canopy cover and Stage Street Homes, and there's actually another. Apartment complex for, I believe, ninety units that we just received at the end of last week after I published this Director's Report. So I believe all three of those will be coming to you uh this fall or winter. But I don't believe any of them are going to be ready for the October twenty-fourth meeting. We're also working on several code changes in addition to the ones that I, you know, in addition to the clear and objective that I listed here. Um, so those will be coming to you this fall and winter as well, although I don't think any of those will be ready for October twenty-fourth either. So it's more than likely that the October twenty-fourth meeting most likely won't occur. Just so you know, as I put here, there is going to be a joint work session that you will all be invited to. On the seventh of November, so the night before the election, which will cover an update on the conference plan. An opportunity for Planning Commission to give input to the consultant. And then also, our transportation system plan finally kicked back off. Um, after waiting for almost ten months for the Department of Justice to sign the extension of the contract. Um, so that's top level state government at your finest right there for a thirty-eight thousand dollar contract that took ten months. Um, so we're back under contract finally, and they're going to be providing an update on November seventh and looking for. Um, input from the City Council and Planning Commission on priority projects. So one thing that will be happening at Whippersnappers next week at the Future Fest, which I encourage any of you that can attend. It's just a drop-in event, you could attend for ten fifteen minutes or as long as you'd like. But one thing you will see at the Future Fest next week, if you do join us on Wednesday, is that there'll be a board there. For the T S P and our consultant D K S associates. Will be looking for input from the public on priority projects. So in the next month, we're going to be. Seeking public input on priority projects. At Future Fest and then also with an online survey with a mapping tool. It's kind of cool, it's going to be launched in the next week or two here, the mapping tool. You're actually going to be able to go on our website and use this map. And then see all the potential projects and actually add comments to the different projects. It's something unique. I'm hoping it works well, the consultants said it will. Because they've used that just recently in a couple of other communities. Um, and then on the seventh of November with the work session, that will be the opportunity for Planning Commissioners to kind of officially give their input on those priority projects. And then, in addition to all this work, we're also. Kicking off some transportation S D C methodology work. So typically in the state of Oregon, you adopt your T S P, and this is how Sandy's always done it as well. And then you come back months later with a methodology and a proposal to increase the S D Cs. In talking to our consultant, Washington, state of Washington, most cities there are now doing them in conjunction. So when you adopt your T S P, you also adopt your S D C methodology update. And what the great thing about that is, then you know with more certainty how much money you're going to have over the next twenty years. So as far as I'm aware, I think we're this, one of the first ones in state of Oregon to try it. And we're going to try to do them in conjunction so that there's not going to be a year of lag time between. When we adopt the new priority list and when we start collecting additional S D Cs. And then one last thing I want to update you on is the City Council, and I'll be sending out more information on this. Uh, to the public and also to the commission in the next probably month or so. But the City Council has decided to reconsider the Bull Run Terrace application, which was denied, I believe, in two thousand twenty. Um, the applicant has come back, it's been on stay at Luba for almost two years now. And they have a second application for Deer Meadows also on stay at Luba, so we have two Luba. Uh, applications current currently on the same property, which is very rare. But uh, they asked us if we would be interested in pulling the original one Bull Run Terrace if. They were willing to put a dwelling unit cap. So before there was some uncertainty with how many dwelling units would be there, and that was one of the big concerns that City Council had was. Not knowing how much additional trips were going to be put on Tobacco Road. So now what they're going to be proposing is a density or a dwelling cap of two hundred units. With how this process works, which I don't think Sandy's ever been involved in this process either. Um, is it's called a reconsideration, I can send you the O R S if you're interested. And what it basically does is the city files for reconsideration to Luba. And then Luba temporarily releases their position on it essentially, so they don't rule a decision. It goes back to the local decision makers, the City Council, they can either. Uh, deny it again, or they can approve it or approve it with conditions. So most likely it either be denied again or approved with conditions. And then, depending on what happens there, then the applicant can either take that decision or they can pursue their Luba case. Um, we actually even asked, is there an option to go back to Planning Commission for a recommendation, but that's not part of the statute. It asks go back to the decision body that denied it, and that in this case is City Council. So that's, that's why you, they they call this, I think David's referred to it as like the last bite at the apple. That's what they were, that's what lawyers refer to it at the state level. Um, I, I, I think this is the first time Sandy's done this, as far as I'm aware, you, you might know, Jerry.
No, I've never heard of it.
Uh, but I did want to let you all know what's kind of happening. And so that's, that's going to be happening on November twenty-first, most likely at a City Council meeting.
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
So, in terms of our roles as planning commissioners, can we go to that meeting and speak on our own behalf? Or um, do we not do that because we're on planning commission, or can we as planning commissioners talk? And have somebody go?
It's a public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so yeah, and you, I, my general gut feeling is yes, and the reason why is because at this point. You're not part of the decision-making body.
Right.
Um. We can always check with the city attorney if you're really interested in digging into it more. I could send him an email and ask him if there's any issue with that, but just my gut feeling on it, I, I don't see how it would be like a conflict of interest because. You're not making a decision on it at this point.
And you can just do an initial statement saying this is my personal opinion.
Right, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Now, now I do, I do want to put one caution in there. Is I do think because one of our commissioners is running for council, and there's a potential that it could get continued beyond the end of December, which. I find unlikely, but it could happen. That person would probably be best not to comment. Now, Chris can go and talk or can go and watch the meeting by all means, and I would encourage that in case it does go into January. But I, I would say that anybody in that situation probably should refrain from making a official comment. Because if it does, if it was to be extended, then that person should probably recuse themselves.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And then I will have some other information I'm sharing with you guys on Wednesday, I just want to let you know, but um, I just can't disclose it yet. Um, but it is pertaining to city business, so I'll be sending an email on Wednesday, so you guys will get more information on that.
Oh, okay.
And then you should, it's not about me, it's just about like, it's, it's about general litigation, and I just can't share it.
Snappers, and you're gonna talk to us there, but.
You said whippersnapper. Oh, no, and any, I'll send it in an email on Wednesday. I just didn't want any of you to be caught off surprise or wonder why I didn't share it tonight. And it's only because it's pending litigation I had to wait until Wednesday.
Sure, so you said Whippersnappers was next week, but isn't?
Uh, no, it's actually two days from tonight, uh, it's the twenty-eighth at six P M. And I think we have the venue until eight thirty P M, so you can show up probably anytime between six and eight fifteen-ish. Um.
Sure, I got, I have another meeting that night.
I have a meeting in Portland, but I can come at seven, and I'm planning on.
I wish I could.
I mean, if you come at seven. If you, if you have kids with you, I, I, or not, if you don't have kids with you, I'd recommend coming a little bit later, because I think.
Oh.
That first hour could be.
Oh, cool.
A madhouse. Yeah.
Oh, so it's good that I can't come.
Yeah, I, I think so. My kids will be down there, so you'll see my kids, my, my spouse is bringing them down there. Um, and I think that's all I had, I, I know it's a lot. The City Council did talk about Pleasant Street Master Plan last week too, so I'll be updating everybody on that, and we'll be. Because it's been so long on that project, I'm going to be bringing it back to you and getting more thoughts and input and recommendations. You're going to be very involved in that process going forward.
Okay. And I, I'll add about the uh, the thing Wednesday night. If, if you get there and see. Place that needs some help. Jump in if you want, uh, in the uh. What's the C A C, is it the community? That I'm on.
The Community Advisory Committee.
Advisory.
Yeah.
Yeah, they ask us to, to, if we wanted to, to help out with some of those stations and so forth. Who knows how busy or whatever, but.
So it's.
Just to say, if you want to say, hey, I can help.
Yeah.
So I, I do think it's going to get pretty high attendance. Um, a lot of times at these open house type meetings, it's, you struggle to get attendance, I'll just be very honest. So we're trying to come up with a creative way to. Accomplish two of the hardest things, and that's, uh, you know, when people take a couple, an hour or two hours out of their night. The two most common things in planning literature is finding childcare. Especially for, you know, younger families, and then also, you know, food, if you're having people come at six, so. I think we are getting like twenty-five pizzas and a lot of other stuff, and it's free admission for all the kids instead of the typical fifteen dollars. And then we're going to be, you know, I, I also really wanted to help Hans Weber out, Hans Weber out and that business, because it's a, I think a really important business in Sandy. That was pretty negatively impacted by COVID, so I think anytime local government can do that, I think it's a win-win for everybody involved.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful plan. Hope it goes very well. All right. Um. Just to note, maybe, maybe to Emily as you're taking the minutes. Our, our public hearing is listed under Planning Commission Discussion, I think it should be under New Business.
Good catch, yeah, that was an error on my part, I didn't notice it until just now.
So we've, we've had our discussion, and now we will go to the public hearing.
I don't think I've ever done that before.
Never say never. All right, we will open the public hearing at six forty-five. This is not a file number, but this is the Industrial Design Standards Modification. This is a legislative. Public hearing, and the end result is that we will be making a recommendation, one way or the other, to City Council. They will have a public hearing and make the final decision. Okay, so we'll call for any abstentions from the Planning Commission. And I guess, uh, for Chris and, not Chris, but Stephen and Jan, you'll have to raise your hands or. Something if you want to. Respond to something, and I'll say now that it is a challenge to keep a meeting going with a third of the people on screen. And um. And we've got to be careful that we don't forget to there, that we uh. Uh, remember that. Okay, any conflicts of interest, anybody? And we move right into staff report.
So my apologies on that, uh, chair, seems like I'm kind of sloppy on this tonight. Uh, it is actually file number twenty-two dash zero twenty-five D C A.
Oh, okay.
So there is actually a file number, I don't know why I didn't include it on the staff report.
All right, well, it's been stated now, so it's in the record.
Thank you. So, this was actually something I've wanted to change probably for about. Going on about ten years now. Um, so when I started here. This section of the code, which is section seventeen ninety-one thirty, it's part of the Sandy style code. We, uh, you know, my predecessor Tracy Brown and I wrote some additional language and inserted it into section seventeen fifty, which is the light industrial. Zone and code uh, standards. And we did that in two thousand twelve with ordinance two thousand twelve oh five. And what that did is it increased the landscape buffer around the perimeter of property that's owned I two. Um, so if you notice, one property that this kind of affected was. The old bus barn building before it moved across the street, so that was kind of landscaped heavier. And then we also had where Johnson R V is now moving into, but where it was previously. What is it, always towing, I think it was, we had that landscaped uh, beef here, and if you remember. Before I worked here even, but if you lived in town, that was part of what they did with Fred Meyer to kind of screen the back of that. And even though that zone C two, the, it was the same intent, was to kind of use a landscape screening to buffer it from the roads. So that, that's why we adopted ordinance two thousand twelve oh five. The downside to adopting that was for the last ten years now. This code section has remained the one you're reviewing tonight. And the unfortunate thing is, as you probably remember, we've had several applications for variances to this code section. And the main reason why, there's two main reasons, and that's mainly because it's more expensive to build. Or to construct a building under this existing um, design requirements. And it's, it's very atypical of something that is like manufacturing or assembly or warehousing to build something to what our current standards are. So it kind of gives us a competitive disadvantage, just to be honest, like. We've had people come here and look at our code and see what the requirements are, and then go to S T K and see that they can build a metal prefab building. And I think we had at least one business that potentially located down there because of that. So, we want to be more competitive. And then, the other issue that this kind of creates is that. You're basically, or the code is basically requiring a bunch of things that can never be seen from the road. Because since two thousand twelve, we also now require this vegetative screening. So not only is it a more expensive, more burdensome design process for a building that really is going to be used for industrial purposes. But also because of the screening requirements that we. Uh, codified in two thousand twelve, after a few years of landscape or vegetative growth, you can't even see the building. So things like uh, the varied visual interest for pedestrians for facade. I don't know who you're really doing that for, except maybe the workers that are coming to the building each day. Um, there's a few other ones like change and relief that are really odd. Um, the alcoves, porches and arcades that were encouraged in here, and then the most bizarre one is. Seventeen ninety-one thirty C ten, and that goes into traditional storefront, storefront elements. So it goes into for buildings designed to house retail service or office businesses. Well, there are some offices, but the majority of the businesses in the I two zoning district. Have nothing to do with retailer service, so it's really, it's really an odd code provision to even have. Um. It just, in my opinion, it's really a competitive disadvantage to have a lot of these things. If you go down, there's some additional stuff on building orientation. Entrances, um, having a connection from the right away to the building interior, but again, you're. You have a vegetative screen, so I don't know who you're trying to attract to the building. Um, there's a lot of window requirements, and in talking to a lot of people that are doing manufacturing and assembly and warehousing. They don't want a lot of windows for a couple of reasons, you know, then you can see into the building, and usually it's. Kind of a little disorganized in those facilities and a lot of machinery, and then the other thing is then it just creates kind of a um. A security risk or issue, especially if you have a lot of very expensive equipment inside of it. Um, so what, what I'm proposing, oh, and then one other thing I wanted to point out, and I'll add what Jan's comment was here as well. Is one of the other things that's very burdensome in this code provision, and I think we've approved. Three separate variances, two on the U S metalwork site. One on the Bull Run Electric Site, oh, and then a third one that never got built on the. Uh, Trillium Machinery Site, and that's to reduce the pitch of the roof that's required in here from a three twelve to a one twelve. I've talked to architects and other people in the trades, and they don't know of any city that requires a three twelve roof pitch in industrial district. It actually about doubles the cost of the roof to go from a one twelve to a three twelve because of the. The trusses or the beams that you have to put in there, they're just that much more expensive. Um, and then, uh, Commissioner Lee did write me a comment that she did want to point out one thing for the minutes and for the consideration. And she said that we shouldn't allow wood shingles. Um, I hundred percent agree with her, I'm on the wildfire task force for the state of Oregon, and. I believe within the next couple of years, wood shingles in most jurisdictions are going to be prohibited throughout the state of Oregon for fire risk. Um, and so I, I think Commissioner Lee's point is very applicable here, that I, I think we should remove that. And that, that was, that was added in here by me. Um, it said, it's D four, it said visible roof materials must be wood or architectural. I then added it to say shall be wood shingle or architectural grade, I would propose to strike wood shingle.
Right.
Uh, the words wood shingle and the word or, I would strike all three of those words. And then the only other thing I was going to point out, or sorry, two more things, under. G, I added in the landscaping requirements, that is, that it's verbatim from what's in seventeen fifty thirty C. So I'm just carrying it over to this section, so it's in both places. Um, so that if you don't read that chapter, you still know it's a, it's a site and building requirement, which I think is very important to have it in this section. And then the last thing I was going to mention is, uh, David Snyder, Economic Development Manager. He has talked to businesses as well, and he is supportive of these code changes for pretty much the reasons I already brought up, so. That's pretty much my summary, I don't know if you have any questions or. If any of this is confusing.
Just to clarify. The, so what we're doing is we're modifying the code for I two and also then adding that I three.
Yeah, and that's, that's a really good point. So currently, if you look at our zoning map. The only area that's zoned I three is outside of city limits, and it's west of. Savella Nursery, so it's out there kind of towards the sewer treatment plant. If that property was to be annexed, then the difficulty right now in our code is there's, there's no code, it's silent on how that would have to develop. And so I would, I would prefer it just to develop similar to this zone. Um, especially now that we're taking away a lot of the, or I'm proposing to take away a lot of the burdensome code requirements. Yeah, so currently the code is silent on it, there's, there's no design requirements for I three, the code.
Kelly, I have a question on the top of page four, um, so it would be a G. One, B. Um, existing tree shall be preserved to the greatest extent possible. I guess I, I just, I'm, where's the meat in that? How, who decides what's possible?
Yeah.
I mean, it seems to me whenever it's just open like that, then what's possible is what's easiest for the developer, which is to mow everything down. So I'm just wondering.
I mean, it's a really valid point, um. It does create a potential issue if staff disagrees with the applicant. Um, just to remind everybody, this, this doesn't have to be clear and objective. Just in case you're wondering, because it's not residential land use.
Oh.
So.
That's half my marks.
Yeah, so. A criterion like that with our clear and objective on it, that would never pass like must, I would say, let's get rid of that, you like, that does not work. But for this, actually. Uh, in the I two and I three zone, there isn't even a residential as a possibility, so it doesn't, it doesn't have to be clear and objective. Now, we could make it clear and objective if we want to, um, but there's no legal requirement to do so yet.
Okay.
We'll move on to public testimony, then we'll come back to our discussion, our, our non-public. Discussion, so we will, we will just open public testimony for a random one, I'm not going to call for uh, positive, negative, just. Give testimony, and again, if you're on Zoom, click the raised hand button, if you're on the telephone, it's star nine to be recognized, so. At this time for anybody that may be in our listening world audience that would like to speak to um. This public hearing, what's being proposed, uh, do so now.
You still don't have any attendees, so besides the people I listed.
All right, we're gonna. Don't even take it personally. All right, um, and there's probably no need for staff recap and recommendation. Um, we can go ahead and close the public hearing, since there's nobody here to talk to, and then we can talk.
Chair, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, seconded. Been moved and seconded to uh, close the public hearing at six fifty-seven P M. Call and favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or thumbs up.
I can't see Scott, thirsty.
Yeah, well, we have a majority here.
You got the card.
All right, discussion, like as, as soon as you said, then it'd be clear and objective, that was half the things that I, I had. Highlighted, um. Yeah, just, let's just do it this way, if you, if you've highlighted things, we'll just kind of go around, and I just have a couple now that I. Got rid of all my clear and objective ones, um.
Um, on future code provisions, I'll try to put that into as part of the analysis, whether it needs to be clear and objective or not.
That'd be helpful.
Okay, yeah, I just thought I'd read something about that it had been reviewed by. Somebody for clearing, I must have been reading something else.
No, it was for this, we got their input just because they're looking at our entire code.
Okay.
And they actually did find a few things that we, like, it was really worth having them take a look at it.
Um, just for my own education, D, let me see, this is the. Yeah, D, there's just D five. All roof and wall mounted mechanical electrical communication service equipment, including satellite vision, but must be screened from public view. My question is, and probably a definition, where's the public view, is that? Like, right next to the building on their property, or is that off property?
You don't know if it could defines public here or not, it's, it's mentioned several times in chapter seventeen. So if it doesn't define it, we should definitely define it through the clean objective order. I'm seeing if it's happened.
The thing, it makes a difference, you know, because some things, if you're behind, which side of the screening you're standing, you know.
If you're on an adjacent street.
Mm-hmm. So public view is not defined in our code, so we would. And then when that's the case, then we have to go to the dictionary and define each word individually, so we'll probably want to add that as a definition. And I mean, we can modify this too, but that's a good thing to add there.
My other comment was. Um, F one. This is just more technical writing. It says, hands with them painted or darkly tinted glass shall not be used, and then when I read that a couple nights ago. Wait, I saw the word prohibited someplace else. And I'm just curious, is, is there a reason why we say prohibited someplace and shall not be used others? Is it a good idea to? Be consistent? That's just an observation, it's really not.
I think C is where it says prohibited and it struck out. F two C.
I thought, no, I thought it was, it was in one that was proposed.
I like the, I like the term are prohibited better. So if you, if you were fine with removing the last four words of that sentence and putting are prohibited, I would prefer that actually.
Yeah, no, I saw it in C three where it says vertical group T one eleven sheet siding is prohibited. That's what's. Struck in my mind because my house is. And there may be other places where it says shall not be used, but. My last question.
So I mean, would you like me to change that? That I'm more than happy to change that.
As far as I'm, yes, because it's consistent and like, like you said yourself, it. Kind of has a little bit more punch to it. And it's less words.
Yeah. Exactly.
G D. My question was the screening requirements can be met by off-site screen. Would that just be something that's on somebody else's property? That would be acting like a screen? Or is it?
Yeah.
Responsible.
I think Tracy actually wrote that.
But I think, I think his point is actually really good. So if you have a hot, I think. Yes, and I think the reason why is highway twenty six. So if you have highway twenty six like this running through town. And say here's like Champion Way here. And then here's industrial. Here's, here's Fred Meyer right here. There's some properties over here that are some industrial. That. You can see from a highway. So I think the thought was is because we have such topographic changes that there could be properties where the best screening. The best way to screen them is not actually right against the property, but from like another vantage point. I think that's what he was trying to get at there. Yes, I think that it, yeah, can be met by an offsite screen. So this would be, say you're trying to screen this property. Be met by an offsite screen and say, right here's the better spot to screen.
So it could be anything. We typically think of screening as being vegetation. But in this case could be buildings.
I don't think so, because the first part of that. Says all buildings that are visible from a collector, arterial or highway shall be screened from you, you by a vegetable screen. That should have buffer as specified below, and then that's one of the specifications.
It has to be, it would have to be something. Vegetative back there in that line that you grew up.
So Fred Meyer couldn't be the screen, for instance.
Uh, I don't think the building itself could. Now, what's how the code's currently written.
So I guess one concern I had about that was if it's offsite, because I, I read that and I was like, so if we're relying on offsite. Screen for something that somebody's building, then what's to keep that screen from being mowed down later, right?
Very little.
Exactly.
The, the one thing in this though, that is kind of a catch twenty-two is it says if the property does not about. A collector, street, arterial street or highway. Currently, all of our industrial I two zones, the only streets say but are collectors, are trails or the highway. So I saw to Emily about this this morning, actually, and she brought up the good point that. It might not be a bad idea to add local because there could be. A land division in the future that makes a local street. And then one of these could have bought a local street as well, and you'd probably want the same standard.
Right.
So I do think her point's really valid, that we probably should add that.
Yeah.
Because even, I think it was written when Tracy wrote this, I think in, he looked at where they were located and it's correct that currently there is no local street, so. But just thinking out into the future and with free zones and everything, you never know. Yeah, and I, and I think your point, Commissioner, is really a good one, is that I think. If we rely on this kind of standard too much, then it becomes very hard to enforce.
Right. I mean, it's when I was reading it, I was thinking about, you know, this. The whole thing going on, you know, that we talked about with the mountain hood, with all the new food carts. And like, what happened to the trees? That were supposed to be there protected. It's like when, when things pass through different ownerships. Some of these protections get lost and so that made me think, well, it's not on the property we can. Said hard to enforce.
And speaking of screening that, that you were asking about the trees, that's repeated in seventeen fifty thirty. It's the, the I two industrial requirements. It's just copy it out of there and paste it onto that. So it lines up and that at least is my question for you. So I, I saw you, you tried to make them all line up, but did we go backwards to see if any of the. Any of this is going to change those two sections fifty and fifty-two. Because I, I saw things like the screening, we were literally just cut cops and paste, but I was wondering if any of the other changes you made. Were going to affect either one of those two subjects.
Not that I know of. It, it probably would be good in the future to. Either, either remove that. Part of seventeen fifty. Or to add it also to seventeen fifty-two, but we weren't proposing that at this time.
I, I mean, there's, there are only a couple of pages and I was just screening. I didn't see anything substantive or substantive that was going to be a difference. I just wanted to make sure somebody.
Yeah, I did look at them. I didn't see anything that I was concerned about, but if you see anything, let me know for sure. Yeah, and so far, just to answer this also, is that D, I, I've never seen anybody use that. So I don't know.
Yeah.
And they can't currently because, like I said, all the property butts a collector or trailer or highway. So you can't even use that provision yet.
Other. Input, questions, observations?
My only other thought with this is, I mean, it applies to both I two and I three. I mean, I look at. Well, whippersnappers, that area there is zone night two and has essentially is now a. Pretty nice strip mall as far as a nice, you know, variety of businesses in there. You know, you got the new. Certain place, you got a kid's place, you know, you've got lots of cars coming and going in there, lots of customers. And while I definitely get the intent of this is to kind of make those buildings cheaper and easier to build to attract folks. I think there is a reasonable expectation that customers will be going into these places, even though they can't see it from the street. Is there a way that maybe we can enhance part of it like the entrance? And least differentiated, you know, because right now we're looking at, according to the interest standards, they could have a. Kind of a plain white door with a metal on it, you know, and that's as fancy as we get, you know. But at least for folks who go in there, maybe have something that kind of stands out a little bit.
So that one's really unique, so I, I don't know who was on the commission. I know Jerry was. But that particular site actually has an approved. Uh, zoning district modification. Pending the buildings being upgraded. And so if you go in there, the, the original building, the foundry building. He's putting all new roof, all new siding, all new entries on that, and that's going to be carried over to all those buildings.
Okay.
And then once that's all complete, then the ordinance goes into effect and it becomes I one. So that one's actually. That one, at least in the context of this, is not a great case study because he's actually going to. That's part of the, that was part of the trade-off of allowing him to put all those different use types in there. Like whippersnappers, axer in place before, before that it was Bunson Brewer.
Right.
And the trade-off was that he was going to upgrade all the buildings, make them look more like Sandy's style. And then we were going to allow him to go to I one. Do you remember that? Yeah.
Yeah. It's a long time coming.
It was, and then the council just gave him a five-year extension about a year ago. Because it's just taking a long time for him to finance it. I mean, he is literally, literally replacing the entirety of the outside. The roof, all deciding, all the windows, all the doors and upgrading it, so, but to answer the second part. I mean, my intent was to make it. As cost effective as possible to build these buildings so that we can hopefully encourage job creation and growth. So I, I, my thought was not to make any obstacles to that. I mean, with a very few exceptions, so. But if you want to propose beefing up the entries, we certainly could add that back in.
I mean, I'm open to what the commission does, but I would be open, you know, I'm not thinking anything crazy fancy or anything, but you know, maybe require a window or. You know, some kind of architectural just detail around there just to.
I actually, I had the same thought was just even just an oning and some detail around the door. Just to have a, I mean, an entrance is so much and. And not, not doing a lot, not requiring a lot, but especially where we live. I mean, having this oning.
Well, I think the oning is required.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I think a little bit of detail. I, you know, it's, it's funny whenever I go to the leather, the Shell Station coming into town. And you're getting your gas and that entrance way is just so nice. I mean, it's like, yeah, we're in Sandy. So I don't know, that I would, it doesn't have to be that fancy, but.
Well, since we, it doesn't have to be clear and objective.
We can encourage.
Yeah, exactly. We, we may not have to, we don't, one, one possible path, because I agree. I mean, it would be nice. But to get into some. A. Highly refined. The way Sandy code is, the Sandy style that you have to have this, that articulation and all this and so forth, that. It could be somehow written to encourage. Public. Public entrances. I don't know. I have no idea how the word, but public entrances is really what we're talking about, not. Not a garage door for equipment to come in and out of or, or employees, but. Public entrance be. Pretty.
A nod to Sandy's time.
Since it doesn't have to be clear and objective, man, we could go wild.
Yeah, don't go too wild, because then we can't interpret it.
I mean, would it be enough to just say that it clearly designates it as the public entrance or something that separates it apart from? You know, an employee entrance or.
I mean, you know, given what you said about the cost of the roof, I mean, and, and windows and things, there's, we're taking away a lot of things that cost a lot of money. So asking that, you know, the main door, the main public, what could be a, a public interest entrance. It's funny, I've gone down into the industrial districts to like. Get something, a window. And the doors are so nondescript, there's all these white doors. You don't even know where you're going. I mean, it's really easy to kind of get lost down there.
Am I stepping into the break room?
Right, right. It's, it's that, it's that. I'm user friendly for, for public to come in there.
So just, just playing the other advocate here. Doesn't, doesn't the B. B one, special attention shall be given to designing the primary building entrance that is both attractive and functional. And that's very subjective to what attractive is and functional, but it gives the. You know, it gives, I guess credence to what we're saying is we want them to pay attention to it, but we're not so specific and. And then I'll back up and say go to C one that's been striked out there for facades. And when I think of a facade, I think of the, the, the street facing of the building. And I, I like the fact that. It gives an option for it to be varied and articulated to provide visual interest to pedestrians. And I, I don't think that by leaving that language in C one causes any demise, because it's just, it's kind of. At least from my lens, it's, it's telling the, the builder to pay attention to detail on the front of the bill. But just, just my.
Except that it. The way it's written does introduce cost with the articulation. Shall be varied and articulated.
And the second sentence is the real problematic one. Which I've, which I've had people ask me about, an exterior finisher shall create the appearance of several small buildings.
Yeah, I'm okay with striking that.
I don't even know what that means really, but.
Well, that's what we used for Fred Meyer. Got them, they, they broke up the look of their.
And it was really helpful there.
Uh, thanks for pointing us to, to be one. Because it. We would have the opportunity with that to come back and say, it's not, it's not attractive.
Right.
Yeah, it's not functional. I don't know what functional is. I mean, a door, all they have to say is, is a door. How more functional do you want to get, but. Attractive. Is. Works for me. At least it's, it's mentioned there, so they're kind of designers on alert. I need, I need to give some difference or attention to this entrance.
Could we say something where it's not holding them to Sandy's style by any means, but, but, you know, just like. With a nod to Sandy's style.
So relating to, so both attractive and functional relating to the Sandy's style.
You could put an EG in.
Something like that. Yes, I like that.
At the end, in parentheses, EG Sandy's.
Sandy's style. So it's not something that's going to be enforced in detail or anything, but that.
They're wrapped that timber cross frame, but they. You better, they could do something.
Pardon?
They don't have to have a timber cross frame, but they could do something a little better than a five foot oning.
Yeah, a metal, yeah.
My other, I guess, concern with this, I think, I guess, thank you for pointing that out. In a lot of these buildings, they're built, they have one entrance or, and then they're subdivided. So even if you have a building that subdivided is the primary entrance, just one of the entrances on the biggest unit. Or. Be divided up into each unit if they built it subdivided. I mean, did we want to change that to something like a public building entrance? Or the public or something along those lines.
So every entrance.
That's public facing.
Public.
It might read special attention shall be given to designing. Any public building entrance.
Yeah.
That is both attractive, attractive and functional, EG Sandy's style.
I like that.
Yeah.
I support that.
So, yeah. Otherwise, yeah, they could build a huge building and say, that's the door.
Yeah.
That's the main door, when in fact. It is, it does, yeah, they've got four businesses with four more doors down the way.
Also, kind of gives that breakup of big, long building.
Oh, yeah.
That would definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, the hard part about referring to is public is. They might argue that the building is not available to the public.
But if it's been used in all the ways that you, that like the, what was the Budson burner or the. Whippersnappers, all those, they are, they were, did end up being used by.
How, how. Yes, do you define it? Because I'm thinking of, okay, if a business is there. I may not have occasion or reason to go there, but salesmen are coming there, suppliers are coming there. To, they're not public, I don't.
Primary entrance will be defined in our code with the clear and objective on it.
Could we define it for like a primary entrance for each unit?
Uh, potential. So the other hard part is when you're building a building, the use might change over time. So say they build it for X use and that doesn't. Have a public entrance, but then the next person that leases that portion of the building or that building, then.
What is available to the public?
Primary unit or primary entrance per unit.
You could, yeah, you could do primary building entrance for each unit or each, yeah, each leasable area within the. You could, yeah, you could do primary building entrance for each unit or each, yeah, each leasable area within the building or something, yeah.
Do we, it was just a question, do we care about the public entrance if it's on the back of the building, not facing the street? Or do we care just about the facade of the building that's facing the street? That's got the, you know, where the pedestrian and the vehicle access looks at it, cause.
Public facing or public.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not as interested in what's behind the building, if that's the entrance to the building. As I have, if it's what's on the front of the street that we, we pass by.
That you may or may not see because of screening.
For me, I mean, ignoring the use case of the building for a second, you know, let's say you do have an industrial park that's set up similar to the way that that whopper staffers. You know, area is, those parking lots wrap around, right? And so what's the front of somebody else's, you know, unit? You turn around or you look to the side, it's actually the back of the next building. You know, and so even though it's kind of the back of a building, it's easily seen from a lot of those different spots.
Do we have, do we have I two, I three in downtown?
That's.
The only areas they have I two are. In the hole, down there off Ruben Lane, and then. Now, and then on industrial champion, those are the only two areas. And then eventually we'll have I three somewhere else, probably west of town. Don't have much industrial right now. As you'll see with the, um, EOA that will be coming out in the next few months, I've reviewed that. Less than twenty percent of the people that are employed in Sandy work in Sandy. So, that's a problem. That's like a really bad number to have. So that, that's one of the intentions here is trying to increase the. Appeal of industrial development.
But, but as we, as the commercial gets built out. We don't want, I mean, then if they start using industrial to do commercial work. But it's like, it's in the industrial and then it's not having conform. To look nice. That kind of defeats Sandy's style. I mean, cause we've only got so much commercial land, right? And then we've got.
I mean, y'all have a lot of commercial land opening with three sixty second bell now.
Okay.
If you go out there and take a tour, it is a lot of land.
Okay.
I mean, I, you'll see in the OA, I. I wouldn't be overly concerned with commercial in the future, because there's a lot of projections that. A lot of what uses this commercial right now is going to go away over the next twenty years. With continued presence of online sales. And also with more people working from home. There's a lot of projections out there that the amount of commercial is going to. Not dry up, but it's not going to be in demand like it was, you know, thirty or forty years ago.
Okay, can we put something in there to, um, what Commissioner Regner said about, uh, individual entrances being separated with some wording?
Yeah, so how I have it written now is special attention shall be given to designing a primary building entrance. For each unit within a building that is both attractive and functional. And I'll tinker around with that a little bit, get some more input, but that's what I was.
Or then, then add the EG standing, standing.
Oh yes, and then.
Parentheses.
I do have that at the end as well, correct?
Okay.
And then what about the facades, the, the C one about? Keeping the first sentence and getting rid of the rest. You have that all stricken. So are we saying we don't care what the front face of the building looks like any, any longer?
Cause it could be big. And, and, and that's where the cost is going to come in.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we want is a hundred thousand square foot manufacturing industry. I mean, honestly.
Yeah, right.
As a city planner, that's what I want to see move in here.
One big end.
I don't want, I don't want to see a Walmart or Target. Somebody that pays forty bucks an hour moving.
I'm fine with it struck. You know, understand, understand what, um, your concern, but I don't know that there's a middle ground for it.
I just thought I would throw the question out there, cause it's.
No, yeah.
It's, uh, we love it. Part, part of me, I'm, I'm, I'm an advocate for bringing business into safety. And I, I know that the easiest way to do that is to make it cheaper, uh, for them to design. But I also, as a, as a, a big proponent of our Sandy style and keeping us looking the way we, we are, right?
Well, and if you look at communities, and I mean, we had this discussion back when Sandy style was adopted. You know, places that have, that have a style, whether it's Sisters or Bend or Cannon Beach or whatever. They actually end up growing more because they're nice, like, so. But I do, I do have the need to loosen it for, for the industrial.
Right.
Just don't want to lose too much.
I just wonder where the language there, it says, facades shall be varied and articulated to provide visual interest to pedestrians. There's nothing in there that says that it, it's going to cost more to build in my lens. It just says that you need to. You know, make that front different than the back sides, back and sides. Uh, that typically does come with more costs, but we're not telling them what they have to do other than use the building materials that are there. But I, I can, I can hear your point. I'm, I'm indifferent. I go either way. I just wanted to bring up our discussion.
No, and not that we could legislate it, but we have had some developers. Lean towards Sandy's style voluntarily. Again, we can't legislate it, can't say that it will, it would happen, but. Be poor planning to depend on it, but.
I guess why, I would also add, if they didn't want to do that, if it was that hundred thousand square foot building Kelly's talking about. Could they ask for a variance?
Yeah.
To not have to build that way. And then, I mean, that, that, that goes against what, you know, Kelly was mentioning at the beginning, that's making a hurdle for them, which add cost, right? Yeah, just things to think about.
Is there a simpler way of, of like, keeping that, that facade piece, but just making it very simple? So it's just kind of drawing it to their attention, but also loosely enough, holding it loosely enough that. It's not seen, I mean, it's something that, that they could talk to staff about and say, so what all do you really mean with this?
And if it's not required, most people are probably not going to do it, because it's just going to add cost. For both designing it and then also constructing and then also for their property taxes. So all three of those things kind of, they, it gets you on the design and then it gets you on the construction costs. And then when you get taxed, the county tax assessor sends over a rep, they look at the, all the plans down here for like hours on a table. And they, the cartographer, whatever they're called, and they sketch it all out and that's how they determine property value. So any little things you add it, it definitely increases your.
So if you make it look nicer, it's going to cost you more.
Definitely does. Say, look at it as, what is the value of the structure? And if it looks nicer, it definitely has a higher property value.
We want the value to be inside the building. What it, what it brings to Sandy.
I mean, that's, that's what I want.
For I two, yeah, right, right.
I mean, if you, if you remember the US Metalworks buildings, they're relatively small, like for Sandy standard, it's not small, but. The biggest one, I think that while Drucker built down there was thirty or forty thousand square feet, so about an acre. Uh, the Fred Meyer building by comparison, I think is about a hundred and eighty thousand square feet. And if you go back there onto US Metalwork site, it is a square building with two awning, but it, but it serves the purpose of an industrial warehouse. Is what it is. So. And he, and he did them with earth tone colors, like the building's not like something crazy, so. Um, and then if you go on industrial Kyle Ruthard's building, which is the brand new red building there that you can kind of see from the highway a little bit too.
It's the bull run, right?
It is, and his is a little bit, his has some articulation and has more windows, more vibrant colors. But that's also three different rentable unit spaces, and he wanted it to be more attractive for people he's leasing it to. Not for, not for customers really, but just to kind of have a little bit more of an upper end industrial building.
Yeah.
But those are two of your most recent cases of industrial buildings in town.
I think I could take or, or leave it, uh, for me, I guess, if I had to pick a fear with eliminating it. Even though we have the screening, my fear is that we end up with a giant metal wall building, right? Just a cheap prefabricated metal wall building, you know, if it were to be honestly done in macedo, stone, stucco or wood. Or composite siding, siding, I'd probably be okay with, you know, just the way that that looks in general. It's just that metal siding on a giant wall, you know, with nothing else on it, that would be, uh, my fear of what would come out of striking.
It's going to be a metal building.
It's number one, right?
The metal buildings now don't have to look like that either. The metal buildings can look like stone, they can look like, they put them through machines and they. Treat them to look a lot better than a lot of siding.
Yeah, so, so. At least some of the.
It's more expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, what you're likely going to see is a metal, a CMU block or a tilt of concrete. Although that hasn't really become popular around here yet, but in other parts of country, that's.
The total country, yeah, they're having a new chapter.
Cause it, it lasts way longer than anything else, so.
Yep, others.
And I, I looked in the definitions, we do not define facade.
Oh, we don't?
Cause I was trying to see, is facade just the front? What does it mean? Or does it just mean what your eyes see? Regardless of whether you're on the backside or the left side or front, but no, it's not defined, so.
As you probably realize, our definition section needs a lot of help.
Well, the definition of facade though itself is the face of the building, especially the principal front that looks onto the street.
Are we, okay.
Sure, I have one more question, sorry.
Well, let's, let's, let's kind of come to any sort of consensus or enough to give.
Oh, on, on that C one?
On, on the facade issue. Cause I, I think where we're going to, to, um. End up, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but it's, it's Kelly mentioned in his report, are kind of our. Two options for tonight is just forward it on the city council with tweaks and so forth. Or give it back to staff and have them bring it back to us before it goes to city council. I'm getting the feel that. REC has gone, that our, our desire is to, is to move it along.
Yeah.
So with, with as many, um, suggestions that we have, so with that said, Chris, you had something.
I just wanted to make, uh, clarify, and I've lost my spot now. Um, it was, it was, um, it was those singles again. Oh, there it is, number four, D four, so roof materials. And we, we talked about not having wood shingles.
Right.
Right? And in there, you, you've stricken that, so it will say visible roof materials shall be architectural grade. Composition shingles, slate, concrete, tile or metal, right?
Yes, correct.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think Jan's point is spot on, or Commissioner Lee's, and it, like I said. Based on my work on that committee, where Sandy's not, we're not even going to be able to put wood shingles within a year or two. Like it's not going to be an option, it's going to be mandated through state building codes, they're not gonna, nobody's going to be allowed to do that.
Everything else was attacked for.
I mean, is there any way on the facades thing to, um. I think the first half, not the second half, the first half of C five. Kind of gives better. Guidance than I think one does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it's talking about when facing a public street or residential development. And it gives a percentage. I mean, to me, that first sentence would be better than the first sentence in one, like to a minister.
I would support that.
Yeah.
Not the second sentence in five.
I mean.
What?
We could leave it.
I would agree, when I'm thinking of cases with the residential development.
It's, it's, I can show you where it is.
If the side of a building faces the back of houses. Of the residential development is backed into it.
These houses. I'm pretty sure this is what it was, what it was meant to apply is, but when we applied Lyles, he made the argument, there's big green belt, so we didn't apply it. But I think that's what it was intended to. A potential here to those houses. So like double creed states is here, that it's the subdivision of the less, of the work of. I think that's what the codes talking about. Or it could be, it actually could be from the whole too, you do have some house from over here.
By the hill.
Yeah. Although it's like way.
Right.
Right, fifty, sixty feet down.
Yeah, it's important whether it's the back of the houses or the front. Almost always going to be the back.
Most likely.
Yeah, build your houses looking over this industrial building.
I mean, with the new duplex rules.
It could happen.
It could happen, but yeah, it's very, I think it's unlikely, but.
Well, just from orientation, that one says you're going to have a change of ten percent at least on that, on the facade. That's all I was looking for, something that makes the street or us looking better than the rest of the building, even if it's a.
Yeah.
You know, a, a minor modification.
Yeah.
Something like that where that, this, this percentage is kind of bumped out, and he's going to sit back or vice versa.
Yeah, exactly.
Even at ten percent. A two hundred foot building. There's twenty feet.
Yeah.
And it's, that doesn't have that much cost, I don't think.
No, and more than likely, I would think, would be put by a door. Cause it makes sense, right?
Okay, so that is where the painter's stripe around the top of that tilt up concrete wall.
A real thick stripe.
Really thick, a belly band.
So we're, we're. Suggesting or recommending the reintroduction of C five first statement through the words residential development.
I mean, you could, you could leave the second sentence, like, it's up to you guys. I mean, I was just pointing out, I don't think you have to, but you could leave it.
Yeah, I, I just felt that was, it's a little. Too descriptive. If we're trying to, you know, be enticing, let them tell me what they're going to do.
Yeah, cause they could just be very simple and just pop it out to them and keep the same metal side on, right?
I agree.
Okay.
Saying, okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
Strike it.
Strike the second sentence.
So I'm adding the first sentence back in.
Okay.
As written, right?
Yes, so that would be, that would become C three.
Uh, it would, yeah, and then the next, yeah.
I haven't seen any raised hands, and Kelly hasn't learned to me, but Stephen and Jan.
Uh, Jan's on, Jan's.
Okay, I thought she was.
No, no.
Okay, Stephen, any, any comments or responses to anything we've said?
No, I've been following along and, uh. It's, it's been a, a good discussion, uh, nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. All right, are we ready to wrap this up? I can go through my notes, I'll look, Kelly's been taking good notes.
Maybe.
I'll go through what, what my notes are for adding or whatever, and then y'all can follow me and correct me. But I have under, uh, B one, we worked on that sentence. And I think Kelly repeated it to us and had it. Nailed it, and C five would become C three, the first sentence. I just have a note on the bottom of page two, uh, D five. About defining public view. And I don't know, that may be beyond the scope of this, but it's maybe just that.
It'll be in the clear, all mentioned to the current objective auditors that we need to add that as a definition.
Okay. And then in, see, this would be D, wait. Okay, F. One, replace shall not be used but prohibited. And then G. One, D, adding local street. So.
I think I was going to add it to G one also. Because it mentions that there too.
Okay.
If you're fine with that.
Yeah, that's all I have from my page flick flipping, so what what I missed?
The only thing I had with that, in addition to those, was the wood shingle strike from Jan.
Oh, yes, yes. On the D or four.
And then I did have some information on E, but I believe you were satisfied once we looked at B again. About the entrance being upgraded.
Okay, so I believe. That it would be a motion to forward to city council with our suggested edits.
If we forward this on to city council with our suggested edits.
I'll say it.
It's been moved and seconded to forward it on to city council with our edits, and we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Wegener.
Hi.
Commissioner Pullen.
Hi.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Hi.
Commissioner Maite.
Hi.
Commissioner Hook.
Hi.
And Chair Crosby.
Hi, yes, yes. Yes, but. Now, just a question for uh procedure, with with our edits, will they just be in like. And the planning commission suggested this, or do you incorporate them in and that goes to the city council? How does that work?
Um typically, I incorporate, I'll just modify what I had proposed to you, and then the proposal bowl, see, I'll just. I'll, I'll probably just say that these are the staff recommendations with further amendments from planning commission.
Okay.
If there was something like really critical or some big section you wanted to add in or delete, then I'd probably mention planning commission. But with what you've changed tonight, I I don't think I'm going to do that most likely.
Very well then.
And just so you know, I don't know when this will be going before the city council yet, I don't, I don't have an agenda spot for it yet.
Well, if there's no further discussion, we've accomplished our business, we will be adjourned at seven forty three.